You want some?
No, I can bring mine in.
Good evening. I'd like to call to order the city commission meeting of Tuesday, February 21st, 2023, and ask all of you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Start with the roll call. Mayor Pro Tem Jinks.
Present.
Commissioner Elder.
Present.
Commissioner Oldsmun.
Present.
Commissioner Rozell.
Present.
Mayor Paul, present. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Communications. We have one communication. Chris, would you like to make a comment about that?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Paul. Just briefly, the city of Huntington Woods did once again receive our certificate of excellence, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association of Michigan. The city has received this award multiple years, but it's just a reflection of the state. The Government Finance Officer Association of Michigan is considered the kind of trade representative for municipal finance managers, and they have a process by which they review all audit reports, those lovely things that we get every year. There are people who enjoy reading those and read them across multiple municipalities, and they have once again given us their highest recognition this year. This goes back for many years, if not over a decade, back to Tony Lehman and Tim Rowland and Ethan Hahn has followed in their footsteps, and I'm very proud to receive that award once again.
Thank you. And our thanks as the commission for all the hard work that goes into receiving that award. All right. We do have a proclamation this evening. It's a proclamation declaring February 2023 as Black History Month, whereas during Black History Month, we celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual, and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of an establishment in 1926 of Negro History Week by Carter G. Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas since 1976, every American president has designated February as Black History Month and endorsed a specific theme. The Black History Month 2023 theme, Black Resistance: African Americans Have Resisted Historic and Ongoing Oppression in All Forms, Especially the Racial Terrorism of Lynching, Racial Programs, Slavery, and Race-Based Hate Crimes. Whereas, the observance of Black History Month calls our attention to the continued need to battle racism and build a society that lives up to its democratic ideals. And whereas, the city of Huntington Woods continues to work towards becoming an inclusive community in which all citizens, past, present, and future, are respected and recognized for their contributions and potential contributions to our community, the state, the country, and the world. And whereas, the city of Huntington Woods Library presented a lecture, Black Bottom and Paradise Valley, led by Jamin Jordan, the official historian for the city of Detroit, on February 9th, and the children's department held a scavenger hunt that highlighted different famous African Americans in history. Now, therefore, in recognition of African Americans, past and present, in our community, I, Robert Paul, Mayor of the city of Huntington Woods, Michigan, do hereby proclaim February 2023 to be Black History Month. Don't have any elected officials here with us this evening, so I'm going to move on to public participation. This is an opportunity for the public to make a comment. Please come forward to the podium if you'd like to do that.
Good evening. I'm Mary Beth Crable. I'm the principal at Burton. And last month, a report was presented to all of you that has some gross errors in it, and I'm here to right that wrong and give you the correct information. It was noted in the report that the principal at Burton, which that would be me, for the past 15 years, had said that Burton would not be a school of choice. Those words have never crossed my lips, ever. In fact, I have worked for 15 years to become a school of choice, and I came from Angel Elementary, where we had a very successful program with schools of choice, taking children from Oakland County that do not reside within our boundaries into our school and educating them. It is a numbers situation for the school board to determine whether a school is schools of choice or not. The principals ask each fall if we could participate in being a schools of choice, and they look at our numbers and determine whether there might be openings or not, or seats available for students other than those that come from our boundaries. Burton had not been a school that had any openings for a number of years. 15 years ago, when I started, we had 612 students. That's a lot of students in an elementary K-5. We had mostly four sections of every grade level. There has been a decline in population nationally, and so each year, our numbers have gone down, not in a way that we are worried, we don't have loss of clientele, but it's fewer than 15 years ago. This year, when I asked, could we please be a school of choice and fill those seats, the school board looked at it and determined, yes, finally. So for the 2324 school year, we will be a school of choice. Now, that also includes internal transfers from other elementary schools within the Berkeley School District, and that they can apply. And right now, the opening for schools of choice for kindergarten and TK is open until March 3rd, and people are applying for those spots. It becomes a lottery system when it's determined how many students would be moving from one grade to the next, and if there are open seats in that grade level. And then they take the pot of people who have asked to be schools of choice in that particular building, and then they're lotteryed into those seats. So we don't know who has applied, we don't know where they're coming from. They have to come from Oakland County. And then we'll be able to fill our seats if we need to. I have 437 students now. So we have three sections of each grade, each class in the grade level, not the four. Does it make it a little bit nicer not to be so tight with 612? Yes, it does. But that doesn't mean that we're going to try to get our numbers up to that larger group. But it was stated in the report that I had rumored to have said that we would never do that, and that is completely the contrary to what I've been working for, for the last 15 years. Unfortunately, I will not be able to see that through next year because, as Mayor Paul and I just said, I am retiring after 40 years of education at the end of June. So...but that is helpful for you all to know how the process works and who makes the decision on whether we are a schools of choice or not. Can I take questions?
How does it actually work?
How?
Lottery. How does it actually work? I mean, we hear the term schools of choice, and I think some people view that as anybody who wants in goes. I knew very little about it before.
Sure.
But can you explain to us how it actually works?
Sure. So parents in other school districts may be seeking something different for their students. And so when we're open for schools of choice, there's an application process where, and it's usually just elementary. If somebody is looking in the high school, there's a scholars program that Berkeley High School takes, but they have to have a certain GPA and a certain standing within the school and recommendations and all. For elementary, it's usually the younger students. They're looking for like a TK program, a transitional kindergarten program, that their children aren't quite ready for kindergarten yet, and their school district doesn't offer that program. So they apply, and then if they're, we get all of our numbers, and we share that with our school board. And the school board, when the superintendent goes to the school board in early October or November, they have a number that they, about 150 openings, district-wide. It's not just per building, it's district-wide. And then once we get, we send out the survey, are you coming back next year, if you're coming back, you know, and so we have kind of an outline of how many students we can expect. And then with those numbers, then we see, you know, if there's a few openings in each of the grade levels. And then they're lotteryed. Everybody gets a number, they put it in like a bingo roller, and they pull out numbers, and those are the people that are placed. Now, people who have applied for schools of choice may have applied in many different districts. They don't have to apply in just one. So they send out, you have been selected to this building in this grade level, and then they have a certain period of time to register. And then if they don't, then we go on to the next. So...does that answer it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
How many?
Go ahead, Joe.
How many additional students will be able to come to Burton?
We won't know until I have all my numbers in. It would not be probably more than five or six. Because my classes are pretty full. I have, we try to keep our lower elementary with smaller numbers, like 22, 23, 24, and the upper elementary can go a little bit higher. So I won't know until we get everybody in place and we look at all the numbers. I'm not anticipating losing students with the preliminary numbers, so we're pretty steady. When the pandemic hit, we had lots of people moving, moving to the west side of the state, moving up north, moving down south, and so we lost not a critical amount, but enough that, you know, we were like, wow, this is unusual, because Burton has always been very steady with the number of students.
What about, did any of them come back, or did large numbers?
Large numbers came back. Those who moved and sold their homes here, they did not, obviously, but those who went, maybe they had a second home in northern Michigan or the west side of the state, they all came back. Yeah.
Good.
So, yeah, that's very good.
Things are good at Burton these days?
Things are very good at Burton these days. Yeah. It's nice to hear about the proclamation that you just issued, because what we've been doing all month long is our Black History Month. We had a wonderful storyteller come from the Historical Society and do a presentation for our TK, two students on the Underground Railroad, and then 3-5 for the Great Migration, and it was phenomenal. So, yeah, we're doing a lot of good things.
Well, I'm sure I speak for my colleagues that there's not enough, aren't enough accolades to use for your tenure at Burton as a teacher and as a principal. I speak as the parent of two of your successful students who benefited from your tutelage, and I'm personally very grateful and as a commissioner, very appreciative and very grateful to you for everything you've done, and we wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
Good health for you and your daughter Erin, and wish her much success, and I'm sure that while you may be retiring, you will still be involved.
Yeah, oh, I'll be involved.
We hope.
Yeah. Yeah. Burton has been my home for 29 of those 40 years. So, yeah, that's home. So, yeah, very good.
All those kids have benefited greatly from that.
Well, and a lot of those kids are now my parents. And I hope there it goes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. And how many times have I missed and called the child the parent's name? Right? Yeah. So, yeah. Any other questions I can answer about schools of choice? No?
I think we're good.
Just wanted to make sure that you have the correct information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Truly corrected.
Service.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, seeing done, public participation is closed, and we'll move on to the first item of business, which is a matter of considering the contract for the 2023 payment resurfacing project being awarded to Al's Asphalt Paving Company of Taylor, Michigan, in the amount of $187,771.25. Not an extra $2,023.
I think the year got tacked at the end of that dollar figure on the agenda.
Do we have a motion?
So move, Mr. Mayor.
Support.
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, are we moving away from the company that we've traditionally used in the past with this, or is this?
This is, this is, this is a smaller project. This is just a mill, a small mill in Phil. We have used Hutch paving in the past for some of this work. They did supply a bid. They didn't end up with the lowest bid for the bid regulations because they had not, they didn't recognize an addendum to the project that was concluded. So we weren't able to count their bid, and Al's, we have checked out, and I do recommend, I think they'll do good work. So, yeah, we're not, this is not DePonyo who's done some of the larger work in the last couple of years. They did the project, I think, two years ago, then we extended prices with them. When we get to our bigger paving projects, we will be going out for bid for those, not extending prices with DePonyo again.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Item number two, board and commission appointments. First set of appointments are mayor oil appointments to the historic district commission. I would like to recommend to the city commission that they appoint Steve Bear, reappoint Steve Bearman to the, for a three-year term, and appoint Ed Engman to a three-year term.
I'll move to confirm the mayor's appointments.
Support.
Any public comment? Commission comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. We have one appointment, I think, to the communication committee.
I'd like to move Elizabeth Ann Panzic to the communications advisory committee.
Second.
Any public comment? Comments or questions from the commission? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Moving on to the city managers. One double duty delay. You're trying to get us to that two-hour point?
Easy, easy, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Just a couple of quick updates. There was some discussion at the last meeting regarding laptops for city commissioners. Treasurer Han and I have been working on that. We will have laptops, we have procured, are in the process of procuring laptops. We did get a quote from our IT provider, then we asked them, can you get us something simpler? So we got a cheaper laptop. But it will be relatively simple, but they will install it to connect with your email address, and basically Adobe to be able to open up your packet. So help us move toward a paperless, paperless situation where you can bring your laptops with you. But they will be loaded up and installed by our IT provider with appropriate security as well. So, and it will connect to your Huntington Woods email. It will be loaded on there as well, too. So I'll look for those in the coming weeks. Once you get them on site, we'll have IT write them down and do the installation, and we'll be able to provide them to you. On the technological front, too, I have been working with Chris Auger, Advanced Lighting and Sound, also with our cable TV provider, on trying to acquire some flat screen televisions for this room. Like, the purpose would be, and I've seen this done in other communities, worked through the other communities, where we'd be able to have live participation via Zoom during our meetings. You can't, as elected officials, you can't participate remotely, but you can incorporate public participation in those meetings, or presenters who may not be able to be here, elected officials or other presenters who may be, much as we did with Mrs. Cantor at the last meeting, but it would be, instead of a laptop, we could have a screen, and you could have live feedback and communication during the meeting. We were able to work through that, actually, at my last community, and that worked relatively well. They just incorporated it as part of their regular meeting process. So even for public, for members of the public who may have kids at home or can't be down here during the evenings, but they might want to make a comment, they can do that, and you can have live interaction with them. So I think it's a relatively easy fix. Our systems weren't set up to do that, but there's a way to work around it and make it work. So we'll probably just simply need to have a laptop installed here to control the Zoom, but it's doable, and I think it's a nice add. So give us a little, couple of weeks to work on that, get the hardware here and do some wiring, but I think that's something we can add into the program, and hopefully with a few glitches. A quick update on the Environmental Sustainability Advisory Committee. I've had a couple of times, done some work. They are working on some revisions to their own bylaws and an update to their mission statement. I think they will actually have that ready by the next commission meeting, so look for that in your next packet. Sean Chris, the chair of that's been doing a lot of work, and I think they're progressing quite well. So hopefully we'll have those, that work done, and have it to you for your review by the next meeting. Last week, Michael Tash from Haley Stevens' office was able to come by and meet with the city administration. Mayor Paul was able to attend that meeting, so asked us about potential funding requests we would have. We had no shortage of those. And concerns, questions we may have about things at the federal government level, that we relayed some of the concerns, not the least of which was some concerns around postal service. So he took those and gave us contacts for their caseworkers, which we have, I think, good contacts now. If there's any federal casework that anybody has regarding social security, veterans issues, immigration, if they can contact this office, we can get you in contact with his caseworkers here locally to hopefully help our local residents with those issues. So it was a very good visit, and we appreciate him making time to come down here and to meet with us. Also had outreach from Christopher Johnson from Senator McMorro's office, our new representative from here, as districts have changed. So a bit of an outreach, and I would anticipate either the senator or the staff making a presence at an upcoming meeting to kind of introduce themselves, and as that district, district boundaries did change a little bit. Lastly, the last thing I just wanted to mention briefly on from the Anti-Racism Committee, well, a couple of things from the Anti-Racism Advisory Committee. One, thank you for the work they've done over the coming weeks. They've worked a lot with Francisco Ferrara, our communications director, and I think they put together nice updates for the weekly email blast for Black History Month every week. I appreciate that's been a lot of effort, and I appreciate their work on that. And the Juneteenth celebration, we've just recently, I think, ironed out a date for that, which will be Monday, the 19th. It is the Juneteenth celebration. The city offices will be closed. We're planning on having our second annual Juneteenth celebration from 6 to 8 that night. Just worked that out today with Tracy's. So same location, parking lot there, the recreation center, and a program hopefully much similar to what we had put on last year, which I think was a good event and well-attended. So that's, pencil that in. Tentatively, that is the night, Monday, the 16th, from 6 to 8. So thank you. That was all I have.
Any questions, city manager?
Well, not a question. Well, one is a question. What is the update on the historic plaque for Rackham involving Ben Davis?
It should be here this spring. So there was a backlog of those being printed. There's one provider from the state, and they had a supply issue backlog. We got the order in last year. They told us it was going to be this spring after the first of the year. So we have, we have agreed upon the location with Rackham, the city of Detroit. It'll be basically in that island off the parking lot as you park, and as you walk, everybody will walk past that, the island where the flags and everything is right there in the front. So they did agree upon that location, and hopefully we'll have it here soon. It'll be heavy.
And then with respect to the widescreen TVs, so, just so, I had a meeting with the city manager last week to talk about that, and I think the benefit to that would be, it would afford us a much easier means of access. For example, Congresswoman Haley Stevens wants to come here to a meeting, but on Tuesday nights, if she's in DC, it's tough. But if we create that medium, we can have her participate. We can possibly have other senators, either Gary Peters or Debbie Stabenow, or Governor Whitmer. I mean, get people who are, it's feasible by Zoom, if you can get them into a meeting electronically, and I think it'll, it's good for the city. It increases public awareness of, you know, various issues. But, you know, I think it's important for Senator McMorro and Congresswoman, and I did, I did a lengthy chat with Haley Stevens about it. She's very anxious to come here, and we're very anxious to host her personally and allow for free exchange with her. And I think that monitors are these days, at least the hard equipment is relatively cheap.
It was really expensive.
And I appreciate Chris's efforts to make that happen. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question about that system as well. I think it's great. It's much, to be able to include our community, especially those who may not be able to be here physically at the time in which we meet, I think that really helps with our, advancing our goals of being a more inclusive community. I think we've all experienced some unfortunate events in the past with security in, on the Zoom platform. Maybe if you're not ready now, but I would like to know a little bit more about the security, should there be, you know, incidents in the future and how that would be addressed?
You need to have an onsite moderator here to work that. I can't prevent the, you know, the person calling in from Griffin Claw and saying, you know, God knows what. But we do keep an eye, we will know who, we will be able to monitor everybody who's on the call. Again, we have everybody muted until we turn them on, and if we have to, we kick them off very quickly. It is, it is open format, so people, you know, once the link is out there, they can, the link would be actually, generally what we've done, the link is just on the agenda, so people can see that and link in.
We had the issue before. We actually retained another company who came in and took care of monitoring that for us so that we wouldn't have that issue again. And I don't, I assume they're still around if we do need them for anything.
I, when it was new, it was a little bit, it took a little bit of practice, but you can, I won't say it's obvious who's going to be on there to cause problems, but you can kind of figure it out. Again, people may be on a blank screen, but if there's no name, there are other things that can tip you off. So the key is having a moderator on site who can monitor that relatively quickly. And again, everybody's muted until you allow them, until they're recognized, you allow them to speak. They cannot unmute themselves, because then that would be a free-for-all, but...
But they also can visually...
They could, until they were booted, yes.
So the key thing is having a moderator?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, it needs to be live onsite, and, yes.
And you feel prepared for that?
I've, I've done it. I had staff do it, yeah, that, that, if you're going to do it, you need to have that person with a laptop onsite controlling that, yes.
Thank you.
And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everybody.